Thank you very much. And if somebody would be so kind as to make a motion, move a motion to approve the agenda with the addendum, that would be much appreciated. It appears to be moved so by Counselor Campbell and seconded by Counselor Heen. All in favor? Thank you. Thank you for your enthusiasm, Counselor Campbell. It's going to be an exciting meeting. Are there any disclosures of interest this evening? Counselor Iman, then Counselor Lauer.
Thank you, Mayor Clark. I will be declaring conflict on item nine within the consent agenda, as my wife is a shareholder and director of the Kuching Golf Club.
Thank you very much, Counselor Iman, and then Counselor Lauer.
Thank you, Mayor Clark. I will be also declaring a conflict on item nine of the consent agenda, dealing with Kuching Golf Club, as my brother has a financial interest in the golf club.
Thank you very much, Counselor Lauer. Counselor Fallas, did you wish to weigh into this fray? Can you speak into that? Thank you.
Apologies. In regards to the previous week's agenda, it's going to be approved. It's in reference to the Grape Island issue. I'm wanting to say that I do not have a disclosure of peculiar interest, but I do have a disclosure of personal interest. I have family friends that have a direct connection to the road allowance. According to the Integrity Commissioner, they suggest still participating in the debate, but ensuring that that disclosure is made note of.
Indeed, and thank you very much for that disclosure, Counselor Fallas. We have no defined presentations this evening. We do, however, with us, a couple of people to do deputations. Our first up is Annie McCourt, and is here to discuss the possibility of the city of Aurelia's enrollment in Mayors for Peace organization. And it's welcome to the hood. Come on out, make yourselves comfortable. It is interesting during the moment of private contemplation, I was reflecting on your topic this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council, for allowing us to make our presentation. My name is Anne McCourt, and this is Linda Rodenberg, who has come with me to offer support. We both live in Aurelia. So I'm here to ask the mayor and council to enroll the city in an international organization called Mayors for Peace. I learned about Mayors for Peace last year when I went to Hiroshima, the city in southern Japan that was devastated by an atomic bomb in 1945. Visiting the Peace Memorial Park, which is located in the middle of the city at Ground Zero, is, as I'm sure you can imagine, a deeply moving experience. And the thing that made the strongest impression on me is the message that appears throughout the site, not one of bitterness or blame, but the simple statement, "We remember so that this will never happen again."
... commitment to the prevention of nuclear war was extended. Should I start again? Sorry about that. Hiroshima's commitment to the prevention of nuclear war was extended in June 1982, when the mayor at the time established something called Mayors for Peace. The purpose was to give municipalities like ours, and of all sizes, a way to transcend national borders and work together towards nuclear abolition. As we know from the Sustainability Movement, and I think numerous other movements right now in our city and in many places across the country, we know that it is at the local level that we can really make important political change right now. To date, more than 7,700 municipalities in 163 countries and regions have committed to the attainment of lasting world peace through the total abolition of nuclear weapons. 108 cities in Canada have joined Mayors for Peace, and in fact, that number climbs up every time you check the website, including a Caloet in the north, Vancouver on the west coast, and Halifax in the east. We have cities of all sizes, from Montreal, which is an executive city, and Toronto, to many communities smaller than ours, like Godrich and the township of Smith and Ismore Lakefield. I'm hoping that Aurelia will join in this commitment to the statement that we remember so that this will never happen again.
So the process for joining Mayors for Peace is really straightforward. Fill out a one-page registration form, pay the membership fee of 2,000 yen per year. Sounds like a lot. At the current exchange rate, it's about $25. Conduct peace-related activities, and they're very open to how that particular requirement is interpreted. So our Arts for Peace Festival is one example. We can also encourage other municipalities to join the organization, and I think our sustainable Aurelia initiative would certainly count as that kind of peace-related activity. So in my deputation, you'll find a link to the Mayors for Peace website, the peace declaration that was signed by the current mayor of Hiroshima, and the registration form for enrolling our city in Mayors for Peace. And as citizens of Aurelia, Linda and I would be very proud to know that our city had made this commitment to world peace. Finally, I know budgets are tight, so I'm going to put my money where my mouth is by offering to pay the annual membership fee of 2,000 yen for as long as I'm around, which I hope will be quite a long time. So thank you very much for your attention, and if you have any questions, we'd be happy to entertain them.
Thank you very much, both Anne and Linda. I will indeed open the floor for comments or questions. I will maybe start the process a little bit. It is interesting, you know, as we travel to different parts of the world, we become more educated. I mean, I think many of us have a cursory knowledge of some of these things. I remember taking a nuclear arms course in university. It was quite fascinating, and we certainly covered, of course, the culmination of the first generation of nuclear weapons that fell on Hiroshima and Nagasaki. But even if you read Vimy Ridge, or the 75th anniversary of D-Day highlighted the number of the predominantly beach areas that were under horrific warlike conditions. And I just did a Holocaust tour in July in Poland, Israel, and Germany, and the message is really fairly common, and, you know, we need to remember so that we don't repeat this, or any of these things. And with each passing year, the knowledge and the freshness of memory diminishes, and there are many that believe if that is the case, then we may forget some of the horrific things and conditions which people had to be subjected to when they're making decisions or supporting different types of behavior. So thank you for your message. And I will indeed, if there's anybody else who wishes to weigh in. Anyway, so thank you. Sorry, Jay. I guess by reaching for your button, you're...
Yeah, I know. I'm infamous for kind of last second raising my hand. Yeah, I just wanted to say, I really appreciate the energy that was put into this, and I want to echo Mayor Clark's comments. I thought it was kind of interesting. I teach a class at Georgian College, and right now, we're covering the subject of nuclear war, and yeah, absolutely, the brutality that it brings, and there's also other implications with it as well. The cost of maintaining these vast arsenals is just horrendous. There's so many negatives that are often forgotten, so I really applaud your efforts and happy to support this as well.
Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Fallas. Counselor Lauer?
Thank you, Mayor Clark. I want to make sure we cash in on Anne's 25 buck offer here.
You know what? I'm not just saying that. I'm completely, I honestly am completely serious. If you can figure out a way to invoice me, I'd be happy to write a check.
Well, I will. I have written down, even before you made that kind offer, because I would be willing to underwrite the same thing, but under deputation motions, I will turn that over to our CAO for a comment, how we would, because I'm sure the mayor's office might be able to find that on an annual basis, or, but I'll take...
Just before you do that, I mean, the reason I'm saying this is because often we have deputations come forward, and they walk away and have no idea what's going on, but there is an opportunity for the motion to come forward to enshrine that promise.
I'll leave it to you.
And make the move, and that'll happen later in the evening. But anyway, thank you very, very much for doing this and referencing Arts for Peace, which was a wonderful event, and I'm thinking it's just in a little bit of a low part of a cycle, but I'm hoping it's going to come back really strong.
Yes. Yeah.
I haven't participated in that particular event as often as you have, Counselor Lauer, but often enough to know it's something worth resurrecting. Anyways, Counselor Lauer did allude to, so this will come up under deputation motions a little bit later in the meeting with council's blessing, and we will move forward with that recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I've got one more hand up there. Counselor Heen.
Come here, Clark. I really believe that this is a wonderful initiative. I was born August 10, 1945, so my birth was always connected to the end of the war. As a matter of fact, my grandmother sent my mother a list of names that all were VJ, Valerie Jane, Veronica June, and so on, and so on, and so on. Thank goodness my mother didn't take the bait, or you might have been looking at Veronica right now, or something. And, but, so when we were growing up, World War II was part of what we were all about. So many of our teachers had gone off to war. When we were in high school, there was the cadets, and Tim can probably remembers, I think it was Thursdays that you all put on uniforms during the wintertime and marched and did all kinds of military stuff, unless you were in the band. And it was a military way that we grew up. And we remember the Bay of Pigs, the Cold War, the Berlin Wall, just, that was our heritage. And when I hitchhiked across Europe, there were certain countries that were inaccessible because they were communist, they were communist countries, and all of that's changed now, so much for the better. But young kids now are frightened. They're frightened that we might go to war and what was going to happen. So initiatives such as this are so important to, not only because nuclear peace is so important, but also, as saying to our children and our grandchildren, "We believe in the future, we believe in you, and we believe in peace is important." So thank you for taking this initiative.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Heen. Counselor Heen, yes, your birth was probably associated with the end of the war, but a whole new kind of trouble began then, I believe. Fun trouble, perhaps. Anyway, okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Get home safely. I see you brought a chaperone and a chauffeur with you this evening, so I think you're in good hands. Also with us this evening, we have Matt Thompson, Braden O'Neill, and Ryan Diblisch, here to discuss the development of the Aurelia Tool Library and Makerspace, which I believe was a Sunshine Initiative spinoff. Take your time, make yourselves at home, and the floor is yours whenever you wish.
I think you have to turn it on. Okay, great. Okay, so hello, everyone. My name is Braden O'Neill. I'm one of the directors of the Aurelia Tool Library and Makerspace, and I also have with me here Matt Thompson, who is our president, and we brought a guest speaker with us today, Ryan Diblisch. Hi, how are you? So I'd like to thank City Council for allowing this opportunity for us to speak today and present our endeavor. The Aurelia Tool Library and Makerspace is a nonprofit organization with a board of directors and a growing list of people interested in becoming members, as well as a growing list of organizations interested in collaborating with us on local events. We're very excited to get this project off the ground, and we feel having this facility in Aurelia would be a great benefit to the city. So first, I'd like to just kind of flush out our idea and explain what a tool library is and what a makerspace is, and I'll just touch on how it can benefit the city of Aurelia. So a tool library is a place where someone can sign out tools that they would need to use, much like a book library, where he can go and sign out a book or a DVD. A tool library provides a place where people can sign out tools, use them, and then bring them back. So tool libraries are sort of like a sharing system in that tools are acquired through tool drives, donations from local residents and local businesses, sponsorships and partnerships with industry and tool manufacturers. And we already have a growing inventory of tools donated by the community. So access to a tool library is usually through a membership. So you pay a membership fee, usually they're, you know, around $70 a year. And what that does is it gives you access to tools that you may not be able to buy, or that you don't need to own, maybe you just need to use them once. So for example, it could be that there's that room that has all the trim that is just not getting done because you don't have the air nailer, or the tabletop, a table that you've inherited as a family heirloom, that you really want to refinish, but you don't have the belt sander and all the sanding tools and all that, and you may only use those once, and so you may not want to be purchasing those. Well, in those scenarios, membership would allow you to sign out the tools that you need to complete these jobs. It would also give you access to an online catalog of tools that we have that are available, and the ability to reserve that tool for that specific day you've set aside to do that project. And making even just these small accomplishments and completing these tasks, whether they're for pleasure, or whether they're out of necessity, can bring a lot of satisfaction, a sense of fulfillment and accomplishment to someone's life. It can help the average homeowner maintain their investment in an efficient and cost-effective way, and it can also help local business and small business startup in reducing their costs by supplying tools to set up a business, or maybe make small alterations to their space as they grow and expand. So that's sort of how a tool library would work. I'll sort of flush out the idea of a makerspace as well. Often, a tool library has a greater space attached to it, which would be a makerspace. I've got just a quote here that I'll read from the Kitchener Makerspace, and it gives a very good description of what a makerspace is and what it does. So just bear with me while I read this paragraph. "A makerspace is a physical location where like-minded people get together in a collaborative environment to pool their knowledge, experience, and physical resources, with a goal to bringing into reality the projects about which they've been dreaming. The sky is the limit," almost literally, "projects range from building hardware to building art, from restoring antique equipment to putting electronic blinking eyes in a crotched doll. Put simply, members get together at the space to make stuff, to work on personal projects or bigger collaborative ones." So a neighbor of mine just has completed a big harvest table that he did. He made it out of the hickory studs that he pulled out of his farmhouse, and it's a very personal heartfelt project, because he pulls these out of his house, and then he turns them into his dining table that his family sits about. So he did put a post on Instagram, and he explained how clumsy the process was. So he started in Berry, and then he had to access a shop in Oro, and then he went up to Coldwater to do the final bits of this tabletop. So he had to go to three different cities all around Aurelia to complete this project. And he also put in his post how excited he was that there is a makerspace movement here in Aurelia, where you could just go to one place to accomplish all this, right locally here in Aurelia. "So our makerspace will provide residents and local businesses with access to machinery, to space, and to tools without having to burden the cost and the spatial demands of owning all this stuff." Membership in a makerspace is usually on a tiered system, so it would be dependent, how much you pay is dependent on how much of the equipment you use and how many hours you need access. Some people only use it here and there, some people are in makerspaces daily, working on their projects. It will also provide not just the physical things, but access to skills and experience and knowledge across a wide range of disciplines. And this can happen organically in a makerspace, with people from different backgrounds working together, but we will also be hosting classes and workshops in a number of the different disciplines. So our space will be set up to accommodate traditional fabrication processes like wood fabrication and metalworking and traditional crafts, as well as digital fabrication like CNC milling, laser cutting, and 3D printing. So we've already acquired over $10,000 in machinery, a 3D printer, some work tables, shovings. We're sort of storing a lot of stuff that have already been donated from local residents, local businesses, and one of the universities in Toronto. And we haven't even done our first tool drive yet, so there's a lot of real serious interest in this. But importantly, makerspaces can grow local business, and they can support local business. So I was talking to one of our jewelry artists here in Aurelia about a week ago, and she was talking about the clumsiness of her packaging. To get the packaging that she wants at a good price, she has to get it from overseas, really. It's shipped from overseas. So we started to break down how, and these are paper products, how much it costs and how much more efficient it would be for her to do this locally with the membership at the makerspace. And the environmental benefits of these small-scale local productions is huge. But most importantly, makerspaces are incubators for new business. They're changing the way objects are made and sold, so products can be made locally and sold locally, as well as online and internationally, and people love supporting local markets. And we already have a makers market to sell makers' products. We just don't have the makers studio yet. Makerspaces allow people that have ideas, the opportunity and the ability to explore those ideas, to get started and to test run these ideas without the huge initial investment of purchasing all this stuff to get started. So I'll just talk a little bit about collaboration. You know, I really believe that the Aurelia community is rich with creative thinkers and makers, and Aurelia hosts various public art events, festivals, and productions year round. Events like Streets Alive, Somniatus, and productions by the Aurelia Center for Arts. These events encourage residents to be active members of our creative community, and they bring people to our city. So we've already been in discussion with the organizers of these events for about future collaborations, and we feel that having a community studio space can only help to improve the quality of these productions, the amount of contributors involved, which ultimately draws more people to our city. We've also been in discussion with the director of Creative Nomad, another new business here on Mississauga Street, for some collaborative programming, and we've started discussions with the Aurelia Public Library on some collaborative programming as well. So our makerspace will be used by a wide variety of people with different backgrounds, skill sets, experience, and knowledge, and it's this collision and cross-pollination in a studio environment that creates innovation, new products, new ideas, and new works of art. It's a place, makerspaces are a place where culture, skills, and technology all intersect and drive small business development and local economies. So in creating a makerspace, we have the opportunity to support the creative, technical, and entrepreneurial base that already exists in our city. So that's sort of what we're doing with the tool library and makerspace, but I would like to make sure that we leave enough time here for Ryan Diblisch to speak. Ryan is the executive director of New Make It, Makerspace, and Newmarket. We're really pleased that Ryan has taken the time to speak with us today and share his experience.
Oh, yours, Ryan, and the play on words was not lost on the mayor.
Great, you got that one.
Okay. Thank you. As he said, my name is Ryan Diblisch. I'm the executive director of New Make It and New York Region Makers. New Make It and New York Region Makers was established in 2015, with our first location going live in 2016. Our main focus is to provide a place for the community, providing support and education to hobbyists, artists, and entrepreneurs. Thanks to the support of the town of Newmarket, the region of York, and the province of Ontario, in the three and a half years that we've been operating, we've generated $3.1 million in economic development for the community and created over 100 jobs in the Newmarket area. And when Matt and Braden came to us, almost a year ago, I guess now, with their initiative, we were very excited to help them. Our focus, or our goal, has been since our inception to be able to bring this to other communities in Canada that would benefit and help those communities to put something like this into place. So I'd like to talk about some of the successes that we've had at New Make It through our growth, and what types of benefits, which Braden has actually very well laid out, that they can bring to your community. So since our inception, like I said, we've created $3.1 million in economic development. We've created that economic development through the businesses that we've helped to foster and grow. Since our inception, we've had 74 businesses that have started and grown, just because New Make It exists. We take away a lot of the barriers to entry for small businesses and entrepreneurs to get started. A lot of those are capital costs. We provide education, support, and learning initiatives which help an entrepreneur get started, and we allow them to focus on building their business while providing the support needed to, you know, take that first leap. Of those 74 businesses that have started, 94% have succeeded and continued on. Currently, we have 19 entrepreneurs working out of New Make It right now that are growing their businesses currently, and we have, we've helped approximately 537 members, hobbyists, artists, and entrepreneurs over the last three years, 53 of which outside of the 19 entrepreneurs in 2019 alone. This year, we've provided 108 different workshops and training sessions, and provided 1,450 hours of training to 483 different individuals in the community. So we're very proud of those numbers and what we've attained so far. What does New Make It bring to the community of Newmarket, and what does a place like New Make It bring to Aurelia? It brings a community space. It brings entrepreneurial opportunities and the ability to start where they may not have been able to start. It creates economic development for the community. It provides education and skills training. It supports artists and hobbyists. It fosters a creative community, and it assists schools and community groups. One of the programs that is very, very popular in Newmarket is we work with a number of the high schools, and we provide all kinds of alternative learning opportunities for students, which we've done since our inception. Our co-op program is probably one of the most popular in New York region. As you can imagine, kids coming to our space and having a lot of fun as they're actually learning has made a big difference. The other thing that we bring is, as I said, entrepreneurial training and mentorship. We have a number of programs specifically for entrepreneurs that want to start out, and everything from an introduction to business finance, to becoming an entrepreneur, turning hobbies into profits, and starting your first business. And as of 2019, we started adding job skills training as well. So as you know, trade training is a very difficult thing to find, and especially introductory training to increase job skills. So we provide job skills training in welding, metalworking, cabinet making, and woodworking, digital fabrication, and now we provide CNC training as well to get people started on a career path. We're also very active in community engagement. We have worked with the region of York to launch our repair cafes, which are very popular in New York region. They promote their completely volunteer program, which occurs at different locations throughout the year, where members of the community are able to bring in their broken or damaged items, and the volunteers try to repair them. items, and the volunteers try to repair them if possible. And our lender, the York Region Lendery, we were a part of the creation of that. The Lendery is very much like the Tool Library, and it's getting launched in most areas. Tools and equipment as well. And one of our big programs that we'd be very eager to partner with Arelia on is our Space NMX program. So twice now, we've launched a probe to near space and recovered it. We have some stunning photographs. If you guys are invited to check those out. And we've brought that program to the schools. The purpose of that is to engage students to learn about science and the environment and to provide the opportunity for students to create and launch experiments to the edge of space. What we're doing with that program now is we're going to the schools and allowing students not only to create experiments that can get launched to the edge of space, but to run the entire program. It's divided into three areas, a mission control, a launch team, and a chase team. We train the students to run all three of those areas, and the students get the opportunity to act like NASA and run the program. So we're very, very excited about that program. We'd like to help, we'd like to help Arelia bring these types of programs and benefit to the community here as well. We'd like to help them create a space, to expand the programs, to bring the education workshops, and entrepreneurial opportunities to Arelia. Thank you.
Great. Well, thank you. Thank you all. Thanks for the initiative. I will say that not that many years ago, but a few years ago, I started renting space in somebody's wood workshop. And of course, I paid a premium because there was oftentimes I needed some significant amount of help. But I did make a beautiful spalted maple bar for my rec room. But it took many months, and anyway, it's still standing. But it is, it was an amazing process, just seeing going from the rough, you know, bark, lumber to the final product. It was, there was something very zen about it, as well as creating something very, probably too functional for my house, but anyway, but very, very useful. So this space, there's a New Make-It, I appreciate, as I say, the New Make-It from Newmarket, and the quickest thing I could come up with is O'Drilia and Arelia. But I'm sure somebody can, somebody can, somebody can do better than that, give them 30 seconds, I'm sure.
There you go.
Our actual nonprofit is York Region Makers. The site is New Make-It, obviously located in Newmarket. I did want to mention one other thing. I have an invitation from our own mayor, John Taylor. If you wish to contact him, he can give you a lot of information on the benefit that is brought to the town of Newmarket and the region.
I appreciate, I appreciate the overture. Thanks very much. So does your shop have lathes and joiners and planers?
We do. We have a full wood shop. We have a metal shop. We just received an Ontario grant, which allows us to expand our metal arts program. So we've added, we have a full welding program right now. We have a CNC machine program. We have lathes and mills and so forth. We've also added jewelry making and glass making, and as of this year, we're adding blacksmithing.
Wow. How we tend to hearken back on occasion, that's great. I will open the floor for questions, comments from those around the chamber. Counselor Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor Clark. There's many things that I like about this, many, many things. Like a lot of people, I have a bunch of tools in my garage that I rarely use and often wonder, well, my wife wonders, why do you have those? And this would be great. Another thing I really, really love about this is the idea of people fixing something instead of throwing it out. I absolutely love that. Well done.
Thank you, Counselor Clustra.
Thank you, through you, Mayor Clark. Great idea, guys. How big a space is in Newmarket?
Our location's about 5,000 square feet. We actually have plans in our location to move to a building in about three years across the way, which is about 15,000 square feet.
So wouldn't Arelia be looking at going maybe into the industrial areas around, even in this area, maybe even forest homes, something like that?
It is, it's challenging to put in a retail area.
Yeah, and finding something in the core, for sure, for the type of space, yeah.
We are, we are very fortunate. Our first location was actually in an industrial area, and then the town actually built our second location for us. And that is actually just outside of the downtown core. We put a lot of insulation around the building because it's actually very close to a residential area to keep the building quiet, but it does work.
Very well, I like the idea. My only question is, how do you insure the built, like if somebody's in there and they get hurt, whatever, like are they covered under what type of insurance, you know?
Insurance?
Somebody to lose?
When we, when we started, when we started York Region Makers in New Make-It, that was our largest challenge. I spent a lot of time working with a number of insurance companies until we found, we found what worked. Initially, when we started, we had quite a number of restrictions and health and safety is, of course, with the tools and equipment that we have, one of our most critical and important aspects. We managed to work with the Co-operators Insurance, who agreed to insure us, based on our health and safety programs and training. The insurance is actually relatively inexpensive because we're a nonprofit, and they do a lot of support for nonprofits. Even now, we work very closely with our insurance company. When they knock wood, we've been almost four years without a single accident, or a single major accident, I should say. Cut fingers don't count. And we have very rigorous safety programs around machine certification and mandatory safety training and safety equipment that's in use at all times.
Can I be able to address that quickly as well? So I teach at one of the universities. I teach fabrication, and I put together their health and safety package with all their video training and everything. And when you take the courses, you have that supplemental package. And we would hope to have that same thing here, is when you buy a membership, you have that online supplemental package that has all the safety training, all the rules, regulations, and safety training.
Before you get started, pretty much, yeah.
Exactly. And as you have that membership, that would be embedded.
Make sure a person isn't a risk.
You could go back and review it before you. But to address the question of being in an industrial area, this is one of our challenges, obviously. I think it's important for this idea that we're accessible. What we would like from the city is to be recognized as a mixed-use space custom workshop, not a factory. And if we're a mixed-use custom workshop, then we would fall under C4 zoning. So a C4 zoning does allow for a custom workshop, and that's what we're hoping that the city will recognize us as, to stay within, to stay fairly accessible for everybody.
Great. Well, thank you very much, and best of luck to you.
Appreciate that and appreciate the question or suggestion. Counselor Lauer, I believe, I have a queue.
Thank you, Mayor Clark. Yes, I'll just add my congratulations on bringing this forward. It's a great idea, and I've actually been watching this idea for quite a while as it's sort of taking shape. And I hate to sound old, but there was a time when every public school in this town had what they called a woodworking class or a metalworking class, and everybody got their hands on a tool and a lathe and all that kind of stuff. And it, you know, it was invaluable, and I have no idea why they've completely abandoned that track. But it was, it was a wonderful experience, and I think a lot of people's careers started there, right when they got interested in, started making things like that. So congratulations for the educational part of this. I just had a quick question, though. How important is location? I guess it's not the kind of thing you can sort of cohabit with everybody. I'm just thinking of some other organizations that might have some, some of that kind of space around.
Want me to deal with that?
Yes.
I think the big thing as far as location is accessibility to the general public. Now, even in Newmarket, there's still a fair number of people that don't drive and take transportation, and we want to be able to provide our services to those people as well. So our first location, like I said, was way out in an industrial area in the top, furthest corner of Newmarket that you could get to. So unfortunately, it was inaccessible to a lot of people. Our new location, being close to the center of town, close to transit, has made a big difference. It's actually allowed us to double our membership and double the recognition of New Make-It in the community. Just moving near downtown, yeah. Now, that said, I mean, you guys have a lot of space out here. I don't know what your rents are like or anything like that, but.
Very, very reasonable. I do want to begin to wind this down, and I do have three members in queue, so I'll go with Counselor Spola first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make it real easy. One of my questions was answered, what are you looking from us? And I think the other one is the WSIB. Do you need permission from them or licensing from them in order to operate?
Actually, we are, we use York Region Makers as a nonprofit members organization, is exempt from WSIB. We do, however, have a $5 million liability and employee liability insurance that we carry in place of that.
Thank you. And it's the second time I've heard this, and thank you for coming to Rotary and the Rotarians. We're very pleased and congratulations. I guess my next question is, have you approached Georgian College or Lakehead University to affiliate with them? Because Georgian College, correct me if I'm wrong, Jay, but I think they do some of it.
They do. And we have, one of our members has just started talks with Georgian, and I believe you have made some collaborations.
I can help you with that. Yeah, we've helped them with their Makerspace as well.
But Lakehead is on the list, yes, that one as well. Yeah, we just haven't got to Lakehead yet, but yeah.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Counselor Fallas. Counselor Heen can bring us on.
Thanks. Through the chair, I just wanted to commend you guys, excellent work, and commend the mayor as well for the O'Drilia comment, very, very, very on point. The thing I definitely wanted to mention, my dad has already said he's committed to a membership. I was really interested, you were speaking about the space program, and I just wondered if you could speak a bit more to that, some of the details.
Absolutely.
What does that entail?
You know, and forgive me, I usually have a presentation that I actually put up, but I didn't realize I had to submit that a week ahead of time. So I could have shown you guys some pictures, but I can send them to you. So we have a group within New Make-It that formed organically shortly after New Make-It started. It's called the Build Club. The Build Club is a group of members coming from diverse backgrounds that typically work on either group or community projects. They came up with this idea about two and a half years ago, actually, and it took them a fair bit of work. And we did, they created the program, they created the launch vessels, the process, the communications, the whole bit. And we had our first launch, actually, it was in April of this year. The first launch was a bit of a test to see how, if it would work. The balloon went up to just shy of 100,000 feet altitude and actually wound up flying almost 370 kilometers east. We picked it up 100 kilometers east of Ottawa, which was a bit of a mistake. It was supposed to land only about 80 kilometers away, but we did get it back. And then we worked out the bugs, and the goal has always been to make this an educational exercise and bring it to the schools. So we corrected the problems. We did our second launch in July. The launch went off perfectly, and now we've, we've started talking to the schools and different educational entities in New York region to bring the students in on the program. As I said, it took a lot of work by the Build Club. It was all volunteer and through sponsorship to put this together.
Thank you, Counselor Fallas. Counselor Heen, if you want to bring us on, my name is.
Thank you, Mayor Clark. I just had a couple of questions. I know that earlier this year, we had a small project we were doing at home, and I needed vice grips, and it took us two or three hardware stores before we could find the right size of vice grips. So just to be able to find someplace where I could have borrowed it would have been so much easier. My thought is that when you're talking about trying to accumulate tools and when you're a non-for-profit, being at the age I am, I've had a number of friends who've had spouses die, and they say, what do I do with all these tools? And they probably would be more than happy to know of a place where they could donate them and know that they'd be put to good use, and then perhaps get, as a true non-for-profit, get a tax receipt. So it's something to look at for the future.
Great. Thank you, yes.
Great. Thank you, thank you very much, panel. Appreciate it, some great information, and I look forward to seeing this thing cultivate.
Great. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Thanks. Thank you very much.
Would somebody be so kind as to make a motion to approve the minutes? Thank you, Counselor Campbell, for the September 16th, 2019 special counsel regarding tax appeals and the regular council meeting on that very same day. Moved by Counselor Campbell, seconded by Counselor Emon. All in favor? That is carried. Thank you. Under correspondence, we have one item, and staff, do we have a motion prepared for this? Or is it simply, I understand it was pulled, I'm just curious if it's to be received as information, if there's any action on this at all? Madam CEO?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The only motion that we have prepared at this point in time is to receive the correspondence as information. And so I believe that either Counselor Lauer and/or Counselor Fallas may have some follow-up questions with respect to this particular project. And with that, I have some further information that I can provide to them with respect to their earlier requests. So perhaps Counselor Fallas or Counselor Lauer may want to raise their issues.
Thank you very much. I do have Counselor Spola in queue. Ralph, you want to go first, and then I'll go with Counselor Fallas?
You ready? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess my question is very simple. If you read the letter from MTO, one of the paragraphs reads, "Should the city wish to pursue a barrier on the bridge between the pedestrian sidewalk and the edge of the bike lane, the city will be asked to pay all additional costs associated with the inclusion of the barrier. The costs would include the wider bridge, barrier walls, and end treatment." And through you to our CAO or whoever, or maybe somebody that knows around the table, this cost would be thousands or if not millions of dollars in order to, so I'm not, I'm just wondering, why are we wasting staff time on this to bring the report back to us when we know that MTO really doesn't like us doing this? So I'm saying that we just let it go and let MTO deal with it rather than us wasting staff time and taxpayers' dollars on this.
I appreciate the comments, Counselor Spola. The only thing I would say in response to that before that Counselor Fallas way is that any member of councils willing, is welcome to bring forward any motion they wish. Sometimes there's costs associated with it, and it's certainly their right to bring that forward and have that motion adjudicated by the rest of council. So I would just ask us to be respectful of those desires. And secondly, I would say that we haven't seen a motion come forward yet. It may very well be to receive as information. So if you, if there is a motion that comes forward that reflects that, then I will look for you for further comment, Counselor Fallas.
Thanks. Through the chair, yeah, I just wanted to speak to this very briefly. In discussions with staff, we've decided to receive this as information. There's a lot of complexities with making changes at this point that we recognize from our standpoint, that it might be impractical to, at this point, change in, change direction in any way. I've asked staff to look into communicating with the MTO about the potential of bollards, which are small median divides between pedestrians, possibly cyclists, and the road. But that can be done through informal channels, and we'll get a report back to see what the viability is of that. But at this point, any, any further change in direction seemed impractical. It's too late in the process. Thanks.
Thank you for that, Counselor Fallas. Madam CEO, would you like to weigh in on this?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, if I may, and I have not had the opportunity to advise Counselor Fallas, but I was advised by engineering staff that they did in fact have a conversation with the Ministry of Transportation with the potential of installing bollards along this area. And at this time, the MTO do not support the installation of bollards. The barriers is, they would deem those to essentially be a barrier, which would require the bridge to actually be expanded in size if there was going to be installation of bollards. And also, they expressed concerns with respect to maintenance issues if there were bollards to be installed. So MTO, engineering staff have advised that MTO would not support the installation of bollards.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Counselor Lauer.
Thank you. As a co, a co-whatever in bringing this forward, co-conspirator, yeah. So I did look at the plan and went over some of the sizes and obviously was quite aware of the fact that if we were to do anything significant, you were going to make the bridge bigger, which would significantly increase the cost. But I did think there was enough play in that bridge. There's a 1.5 meter buffer and, and certainly some of the sizes of the sidewalks and, or not sidewalks, but the trail and the bike lanes, I would have thought could accommodate a 0.2 meter bollard. But I mean, this is a good lesson in how the public sometimes feels when we ask for consultation, right? They ask for our opinion and tell us no. So I'm not sure why we were asked in the first place, but because we did express opinions, which didn't go anywhere. But anyway, that being said, we'll probably be just accepting this as information.
Counselor Fallas?
Thanks. Just a quick supplemental, and I do appreciate Ms. Jackson's input there. My primary concern was the details around the barrier and what that entailed were somewhat vague and just reconfirming the specifics of it, whether the bollards would be considered with the, the terminology of barrier. And so that's, that has a lot to do with what the informal elements will be going forward. But yeah, as it stands, no, at this meeting, no formal change in direction. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Counselor Fallas. And staff, if you, you have a motion right there that this, essentially this be, received as information, is there a mover and a seconder? Moved by Counselor Heen, seconded by Counselor Spola. I'll wait for that. Well, I will read it now. Moved by Counselor Heen, seconded by Counselor Spola. The memo dated August 27th, 2019, from the Development Services Engineering Department regarding correspondence from the Ministry of Transportation. Thank you. With respect to the Highway 11 West Street Bridge replacement, be received as information. Is there any further discussion around this? I'll call the question. All in favor. That's carried. Thank you. We are into the report part of our council agenda. And just a refresher for those watching here and at home, these are predominantly are all items that we were, that were on the table last week for discussion and debate. And the associated recommended motion is, is enshrined with the report before us. But we will enshrine all these motions with one motion unless, with one motion unless somebody wishes one, any of them to be pulled for change of direction. Is there anybody that wishes to, are we aware of anything? Ms. Williams?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I'm aware of Counselor Ainsworth pulling Clause 5 of the CC report. That's with respect to the 2020 council meeting schedule. That's for a recorded vote. And I'm also aware of Clause 9 being pulled for a potential change. That is with respect to the Investing in Canada Infrastructure Program grant.
And who is speaking to that?
I believe that's Counselor Spola.
Counselor Ainsworth, just, is this to speaking or change of direction?
Sorry, Mr. Mayor. It was just in regards, I also wanted to pull item number six. My apologies to staff for not catching that.
For direction or speaking? Thank you. Right now, I have three being polled. I'll entertain a motion to enshrine the rest. Counselor Spola, you wishing to pull an additional item?
Oh, I'd like to speak on one, please, if I could, on number eight.
On which one?
Number eight.
So, okay.
Just a question.
Okay. So why don't you go ahead and speak on number eight, then we will entertain the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We all know that this has gone on quite a, quite a long time. And I'm just wondering, last ditch effort, and maybe Counselor Emon might be able to help me answer this, with you and Counselor Emon, who represented council.
Counselor Spola.
Is there a way that we can meet with them?
Counselor Spola, sorry. I just want to remind you that this is now a legal matter.
I understand that.
And if you're going to speak to it, you're going to have to speak to it in very, very high level terms or?
No, my only question, Mr. Mayor, has nothing to do with the legality of it. It's just a question of, through you to Counselor Emon, if there is an effort to sit down with them as a last ditch effort to prevent the legal pursuing of the legal ramifications of this and to the taxpayers of our community.
I think I will turn to Counselor Emon in a moment. I will think I'll start with our, our CAO first.
Through, through you, Mr. Mayor. Certainly, your point is, is valid. They have commenced a legal action against the city. So we are now into illegal action with the Grape Island Association. And part of that process may very well be mediation. That would be court sanctioned. But having said that, any discussions outside of our legal advisors with respect to this association would not be advised.
You wish to, we're fine with that. Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Counselor Spola. In that case, I have a report in, on the screen in front of us. Is there a mover and a seconder? From the enthusiastic side of the chamber this evening, moved by Counselor Campbell, seconded by Counselor Clustra. That the report number 2019-11 of Council Committee, now before council be adopted with the exceptions of, with the exception of clauses five, six, and nine. Thank you very much. Which shall be introduced separately. Any further discussion on the, on those other clauses? I'll call the question. All in favor? Thank you. Carried. And for the gentleman who about five and a half years ago asked me to verbally articulate whether a motion was passed or not, I want you to know that I still remember and I still do. Okay. So right now, we have a number five being polled, I think simply for recorded vote, correct? So we'll deal with that first. I still need a mover and a seconder for, because it's now at, moved by Counselor Ainsworth, seconded by Counselor Heen. That report, sorry, that Clause 5 of Report Number 2019-11 of Council Committee, now before council be adopted, Clause, Clause 5 reads as follows. Thank you very much. That report, so refers to the report CD 1915 dated September 3rd, 2019, from the Clerks Department, the 2020 council meeting schedule be adopted, is set out a schedule A of the report with the exception that council committee and council meetings be indicated to begin at 6:00 PM. And that Chapter 12 of the City of Arirang Municipal Council Committee procedure be amended to allow council committee meetings to occur at 6:00 PM. And that Chapter 22, 22 of City of Arirang Municipal Council procedure be amended to allow council meetings to occur at 6:00 PM as well. Occur at 6:00 PM is, is good wording. Doesn't have to say commence or begin at 6:00 PM.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The current wording will be sufficient.
Okay. Because I was thinking that we'd have to do our whole meeting in one minute if it occurred at 6:00 PM. Is there any further discussion on this? No? Yes? Counselor? Oh, I see. Okay. Be it so noted in our records. Thank you, Counselor Fallas. I will ask staff now to queue us up for recorded vote. And you may begin to vote. I thought it, yeah.
I will end the vote, Mr. Mayor. And the results. Counselor Campbell, yes. Counselor Fallas, yes. Counselor Ainsworth, yes. Counselor Heen, yes. Counselor Spola, yes. Counselor Clustra, yes. Mayor Clark, yes. Counselor Emon, yes. Counselor Lauer, no. The motion is carried.
Thank you very much. And Counselor Ainsworth, do you also wish to speak or change direction of number, Clause number six with respect to property standards?
Sure. Three, Mr. Mayor. I just pulled this simply to vote against it. I won't get into, you know, quite in depth of what I did last week. But I, just to recap, I don't support proactive enforcement with the city in regards to these bylaws. And I will be voting against it as a result. I do think that when the budget time comes, I'll get more into this about, that we should be funding the bylaw department more. There's a way to do that, and we don't need to do proactive enforcement in that regard. And I will just leave it at that.
Thank you very much. Is there any further discussion on this, of a motion that I need a mover and a seconder to? Moved by Counselor Lauer, seconded by Counselor Clustra. Thank you. That Clause 6 of Report Number 2019-11 of Council Committee, now before council be adopted. Is there any further discussion? Thank you. I will now call the question. All in favor? No? All in favor? That is carried. Thank you. And now, item number, Clause number nine of Report Number One, with respect to the grant application opportunities the city finds itself presented with. There is a motion on the floor, moved from, from Council Committee to Council from last week. Is there a mover and a seconder to get this on the floor? Moved by Counselor Ainsworth, seconded by Counselor Campbell. That Clause 9 of Report Number 2019-11 of Council Committee, now before council be adopted, Clause 9 reads that as recommended in the report, PRCD, thank you very much, 1909 dated September 24th, 2019, from the Parks, Recreation and Culture Department, staff be directed to apply to the Investing in Canada Infrastructure Program, Community Culture and Recreation through Grants Ontario for the following projects in order of priority. Number one, Brian Orser Arena renovations. Number two, waterfront park improvements. Number three, Atherton Narrows Trail Connection and Fishweer's Interpretive Center Project as part of the multi-purpose category. Is there any discussion on this motion? Counselor Spola?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm wondering if you'd help me out here. You and I had a really good conversation today. And maybe you can reflect what the conversation was about that, about the bridge and with Rama, Ramera and us. I have a couple of questions that maybe Counselor Lauer can answer as well. The Trent-Sarren Waterway, when we say that Arirang owns part of the bridge or all of the bridge or whatever it is, we own the physical bridge, but not the land under it. Am I correct in assuming that? But maybe first, Mr. Mayor, if you would elaborate on the, on the conversation that you, you and I had and help me out here a little bit and, and just the way you and I discussed it.
I'm glad to do that. Counselor Clustra, would you mind taking the chair? Sorry.
Go ahead, Mayor Clark.
Thank you, Counselor Clustra. Yeah, this is an interesting topic. Counselor Spola, as I mentioned last week, I'm actually of two minds on, on, on the Brian Orser revamping and the, versus the, the potential of a new arena on, informally known as Phase Two, 255 West Street South adjacent to our, our Recreation Centre, which will be open in the next few months. The one thing I, I, I do believe that it is important that Rama First Nations, First Nation rather, takes the lead on the application for the Narrows Bridge. My, after meeting with Counselor Emon, he and I were on the same page, and I think some others were as well, that we were hoping to put a couple of applications in that created a non, as much of a non-competitive environment for, for those applications as possible. And one idea we had was to hopefully have Rama take the lead. And then, because if we're signatory to that, apparently that counts as an application for the city as well. And we were hoping to maybe offer a letter of commitment to be a partner in this subsequent to Rama hopefully being approved for the, the bridge financing or the, the interpretive bridge financing. My understanding, and now after having staff reach out to the grants people, is that if we are involved in this application at all, we need to be signatory to it, and it will count against us. Not against us, it will count as one of our applications. But I do think it's, it's important that Rama takes the lead. First of all, it is, it is, it would be a co, an interest of, or an interest, a project of co-interest. And I think it would do a number of things for, for our community, including tourism, education on our indigenous past, and maybe even help move reconciliation forward to some degree. But I also believe it's important that Rama takes the lead because they have the ability to obtain 20% more funding for a related project than the city does. And that, and that's, the scope of that difference is, is significant. The other, so that would leave us, if indeed that is the case, and they, they take the lead, I guess I have a question for our staff. If we put in an application for Brian Orser and for the waterfront park and for the Phase Two Arena only, does that create, I mean, the obvious answer is that it creates more competition for the first two applications. But that, does that, as far as we know, diminish our chances of having success with any of our applications?
Madam CEO?
Through you, Mr. Chair. It is my understanding that in discussions with our regional advisor with respect to this grant program, if we pursue a grant application for the Brian Orser Arena as well as a standalone arena, the expectation would be that the business case would have to be very strong for a new arena. And if it's not, and there's not sort of clear rationale as to why, in fact, we are pursuing a new arena versus the, the renovation of an existing, if we're not clear, it won't help us in our application process. And also, if the new arena is substantially higher in terms of costs related to building it versus the renovation, that also would be something that the, the province would take into consideration. So that's information that we have gathered late today, where the advisor has indicated that if you're going to pursue both projects, recognize that you'll need to make sure that you have clear rationale for the distinction into. But they, they would be deemed two separate applications.
If I may, indeed, yeah, we were apprised that if we're going to put in two applications for a similar, similar result, in other words, rather than revamping or the building of a new arena, the business case of the new arena, because of the scope of the dollar value, would have to be significantly substantiated. I'm, I'm not sure what, I know there would be some aspects that I think would be fairly easily articulated, but might not be enough to, to have one win over the other. But I guess my question is, and you know what, I admire our CAO, sitting here without everybody in their, in their, from their respective departments. So it's, it's a wealth of knowledge you need to have to sit there and do that job at council many times throughout the year. But my question is, would putting in an application for Phase Two Arena diminish the chances of Brian Orser application being successful?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I would suggest that it wouldn't necessarily diminish our ability to be successful under the application to rent. ability to be successful under the application to renovate Brian Orser. There's nothing that, or any conversation that we've had to date with our advisors that would suggest that, that would be an issue of concern. It was primarily based on if you're going to submit, then make sure your rationale is, is very clear. We do have more information that would help us in an application process for the Brian Orser renovation because there has been a fair amount of work that has been, that has been done with respect to evaluating what actually needs to be done at the, at the Brian Orser Arena. And we have minimal amount of information at this stage with respect to a brand-new arena. We did some very initial research in the previous term of council on sort of the, the Phase Two, which was a sort of dry pad in an arena component. And so we, we have certainly some information that we would be able to pursue an application process for a standalone new arena, but it wouldn't be as, as fulsome as the information that we had for, for Brian Orser. But we have, I don't have any information that would suggest if we go ahead and submit for the phase, for the standalone arena, that that would adversely impact our, our potential opportunity for garnering funds for the Brian Orser renovation.
And if I, if I could close off, thank you for your patience, you and the rest of my colleagues. What I would ask council to consider doing is, 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 I believe that we've already reached out to Rama to see if they would take the lead on this, but on the Atherton Narrows Trail Connection and Fish Weir's Interpretive Centre. Somehow we would enshrine that in a motion and then consider putting in the Brian Orser, the waterfront park and the Phase Two Arena only as, as three separate applications. At the moment, we don't know if that does anything to diminish the possibility of one of those being successful. Madam, through you, through Madam CEO, if there's an amendment brought forward, should it also read that we should further discern whether that, that kind of competition would, would limit the possibilities of one of them being successful, or just let it, leave it as, as all three being submitted?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Just maybe a couple of points. If we're looking at two amendments, one being that we add an amendment that would see or request specifically that, or, I'm sorry, that number three be, we pursue the project listed under number three, provided that Rama actually take the lead in the application. So that would be one, one amendment. And then a further amendment would see that standalone arena, I assume based on my observations, that it would be a thousand-seat standalone arena be added to the motion. So we would deal with that as a, as a separate amendment. In terms of putting a further caveat, we're, I guess we're in constant conversation with our advisors. And if it came, if council was satisfied with this, if it came down to the advisor saying, well, if you're, if you continue along the line of pursuing the phase or the standalone arena, it is going to adversely impact your ability to secure funds for the Brian Orser. We would certainly, we would certainly recognize that at this stage councils identified the Brian Orser Arena renovations as the number-one priority, and we would advise them of that.
Counselor Lauer?
Thank you. I just want to clarify what's going on here. So you're, the mayor is suggesting that we make the Atherton Narrows disappear, and in this place, we put the Phase Two of the Rec Center on as three, and then we approach Rama First Nations about leading the, or making the application. And if they say, no, it's not within their ability to do, or if they, we bring it back in November, and the date of the applications is November, and we would have to make up our application, then I'm just not sure how that would all work out. I, I'm not sure why the Atherton Narrows Bridge cannot remain where it is. And that it was always our intentions to go to Rama First Nations and ask them to, to lead the charges, as far, lead the charge as far, as far as the application is concerned. And if that would happen, then great. And if it didn't happen, then we wouldn't have lost our opportunity as a municipality to make this project a go. So I'm not understanding exactly what happens if things don't work out.
Mayor Clark, then Counselor Eamon, then Counselor Sapola.
Thank you. I'm just responding to Counselor Lauer. I can't think of a reason, there may very well be one, why Rama wouldn't take the lead on this. I don't, as much as I think there is support for that project around the table, I don't know why I would support it if Rama First Nations didn't. I mean, it's, it's certainly not solely a First Nations or Indigenous issue, but it is certainly largely that. And, and it certainly makes financial sense for the city for Rama to take the lead on that, because if they are successful, they have the ability, if it's a $10 million project, to procure not $2 million more dollars than, than we do as a city. So it's a lot less financial burden on us. Unless there's wording, Counselor Lauer, that says we approach and ask Rama to take the lead. And, and if not, perhaps we could make that a city application. But again, I would be very hesitant if they weren't a wholesome partner in this to, to have the city move it forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I mean, there's a million reasons why they, they could have issues with this. We don't know what their legal implications are, if there's financial implications that we're not considering. We don't know that for a fact. I mean, I know that they're in, in support of the project. They've been a part of it for 20 years. That's not a question, but I, I'm just a little hesitant to, when opportunities like this come along, to, to take that kind of a chance, when, if we simply leave it there and leave it in its place, and if it develops, then everything is fine. If it doesn't, then the city hasn't missed an opportunity.
The only response I would give to that is, we were told before that the, the grant applications review people suggested we put in a maximum of three. We're not ultimately limited to three, but they recommended a maximum of three, of three projects. And if we do that, we're kind of going against that advice and certainly leaving one of the, oh, sorry, Counselor Lauer just asked, why would we put both arena projects in there? That's, I think it's a valid question, but there are some in the community. Can I ask a question through you, Mr. Chair, to Madam CEO? Did you have any discussions with Rama that indicated that they may very well be moving ahead with, with the application?
Through you, Mr. Chair. At this point, a request has been made to Rama to consider taking the leadership. They were intended to meet today to discuss the issue, very sadly. So we will await their discussion next Tuesday in terms of whether they would take the lead or not.
Counselor Eamon.
Respect to the, the Narrows Bridge, my preference would be to do as our CIO has suggested, add an amendment that makes our submission of this contingent on the, the Rama First Nations taking the lead and, and submitting the application. And if they don't, we don't submit on this particular issue. If they're not willing to do that, mine is an indication that they're not willing to support the magnitude of project nor the finances of the project. And I'm not, so I would be more than pleased at some point to move that, that motion of contingency on this.
And I would second that.
Mayor Clark, and Counselor Sapola.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just want to read, I received, and I think it's on your agenda, the letter from Mr. Bill and Eileen Brown about the use, just the arena, and that is for affordable housing. I think all of us have read the letter, how much need there is for affordable housing. But that's a sideline. Agree with, with the mayor. And to Counselor Lauer, I was on the committee for the bridge. I totally support the bridge.
Clarify, Ralph. You were not a part of the committee.
Back in 2006, 2007, 2008.
No. You were a part of this, maybe the Fish Fence.
Counselor Lauer?
Something, but it was not the committee that I am on.
Okay. Counselor Sapola, let's start from the beginning. Then you certainly go ahead.
Thank you. Anyways, I support the, the bridge and, and also the thing, but I, and see where it goes from there. But I, I like the mayor's and Counselor Eamon's idea that at least it puts us on a, on a, on a positive foot.
Through you, Mr. Chair, if I may. So I understand that Counselor Eamon and Mayor Clark would like to bring an amendment forward, just if we can ensure that we've captured what they're looking for. At this point, what has been drafted is, is, if I put my glasses on, is the motion would be amended to add the following after the number three. But there's a caveat, and that caveat is, is that it would move forward subject to...
Between now and submission date, they are not going to take the lead, then we do not submit an application. This is saying that it was my intention that if perchance, sometime between now and submission date in November, the Chippewas, then we do not submit this application. In other words, there, we would be at, with the motion as it now stands, there'd only be two applications going in from the city.
As it now stands, without a further amendment to...
I'll read the motion. Mr. Mayor, yeah?
So, so if we're going to add an additional application, that would be a separate amendment. That's a question from, through you.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, through you, Mr. Chair, that is correct.
Thank you.
I will read the motion, moved by Counselor Eamon, seconded by Mayor Clark, that the motion now before council be amended by adding the following, with the exception that the following be added at the end of the third priority ranking, subject to the Chippewas of Rama First Nation taking the lead on the application process. Any more discussion? Counselor Lauer?
Thank you, Counselor Clustra. I would recommend council not approve this amendment. It's a, it's an all-or-nothing kind of statement. We have no idea what, what reasons may, may come into play that wouldn't allow someone to make the application. The, and what we're replacing it with is a project that we have no idea what it looks like. We're very short on information. As a matter of fact, I've heard conversations that the, the West Street site is not the place you would put another arena. In fact, you would put it on, on our West Arilia site. It's, so we're, we're substituting a very vague, kind of a long-shot application for one that I think has been well, well, well researched, well-developed. We've got a, you know, a great set of drawings. We've gone through an EA on it. We've invested a lot of money. Rama First Nations has invested money in it. Ramara has invested money in it. There's no argument about the quality of, of that project. And if we're thinking of compromising it anyway, I really recommend against that. We can proceed down the road with, with the motion as it stands now. We, of course, will be approaching Rama First Nations. And if, in their wisdom, they, they agree to do the application, then we can go that route. But if, as I say, if there are reasons it doesn't allow that to happen, then this city is still in a position to make the application. So I would urge my fellow counselors not to approve this.
So I have Mayor Clark, Counselor Eamon, Counselor Follis, and Counselor Eamon.
Thanks very much, Counselor Clustra. I want to be very clear that, that I am not replacing anything in the application process by moving the Narrows Bridge application out. I firmly believe in my head and heart that Rama First Nations should be taking the lead on this for, for a couple of reasons. Certainly as a sign of support for the project and, and also because of the financial benefit that that application could bring, potentially saving the, the project two-plus-million cost, which the city of Arilia would largely bear. So whether the standalone arena comes in subsequently or not, I would still be going in this direction. We did get an indication today. I think I can say that, that this was going to be on a Rama council agenda today, and they had an unfortunate incident in the, in their, in their municipality today, and therefore the meeting was, was postponed. So I fully expect that this will come to the council table, and I would certainly hope it would receive strong support. The, I don't want to get into the debate on, on the, on the, on the standalone arena, because as I say, I'm not replacing, I'm not putting that in in lieu of taking, of taking the Narrows Bridge project out. I fully believe that Rama should be taking the lead on that, and I believe that we will be, need to be signatory to that, and actually we'll give it our full support on, in that particular method. Thank you.
Counselor Eamon, Counselor Follis?
Thanks. Through the chair, I'm going to be voting against this motion. I think there's many possible subtleties on Rama's end that we might not be able to foresee in this deliberation. And I think there's also a potential that it might get misinterpreted as disrespectful, so I will be voting against. Thanks.
Counselor Eamon?
Thank you, Counselor Clustra. Through you to our CIO. If Rama takes, takes the lead, they get 93% of the funding, would that be correct? So if that's the case, what would our share be of the project compared to if we put the grant through? My understanding is it would probably be, be less expensive for us to go this route than it would be if, if we put, put our grant in. So we would still be supportive, but it would cost us less. Would that be correct?
Through you, Mr. Chair, that is correct, that if Rama does take the lead on the application process, they are entitled to a higher portion. And so ultimately, the project costs for all the partners would be much less.
Supplementary? So we can still be supportive, we can still be supporting Rama, we can still be saying that we would do it, but in the, in the end, it would cost us less money to go this route than if we had it as one, as one of our, of our three projects? So fiscally, to me, it would make sense. And I think that most of you know that I've been supportive of, of this bridge, and I keep talking about the, the tourist attractions, and I keep going back to the fact that when my daughter, I took my daughter-in-law to Oman and showed her a piece of the wiers, and she came home so excited that we had a 5,000-year-old history in this community. And, and she, she couldn't get over that this was, this was a great tourist opportunity. So I keep seeing that, that the fact that we could have a center there that could attract tourists. And, you know, if we had advertised in Niagara Falls where a lot of international people go, we could do it, but we could do it at less money if we did, went this route, rather than the original route.
Thank you. Counselor Lauer?
Thank you, Counselor Clustra. It's obviously apparent that, that if we can do it through Rama First Nations, it's obviously, fiscally, a better deal. But the question is, if, if that, as I, as I've said before, if that can't be done, then we're not applying as a city, because we've, that, that horse has left the barn. So what I'm saying is, what we're doing here is, and the mayor is assuring us that this is a sure thing. I haven't heard that, but if it, I'm certainly hoping it is a sure thing that Rama can do it. But if it isn't, then we lose that opportunity to make this application as a city. So that's what, that's what we're gambling here. And, and what we're doing this for, and the whole motivation here seems to be to get the Phase Two of, of the, of Foundry Park on the table. And we know that that is not a solid application, because we don't have the detail and we haven't had an opportunity to really develop that as a, as a, as a bona fide application. So all I'm saying is, why are we gambling here? Why, why, why would we not leave the motion as it is? Let it proceed. If Rama First Nations is, is able to do this for us, then it's... If Rama First Nations is able to do this for us, then it's a great thing. And if they aren't, then we still have the opportunity to put forward an application that has all kinds of documentation behind it. It's well-planned out, it's been through an EA, it's ready to go, and that is what the federal government is looking for, as opposed to a vague conceptual idea of an arena that we're not even sure where it should go. So that is what, to you, Counselor Heen, I quite understand that it's a better deal to go to Rama First Nations, and I'm all for that. But what I'm saying is, I don't think it's necessary to gamble here.
Counselor Eamon?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, I want to point out to my colleagues, we're not debating either-or at this point. We are dealing specifically with a, how do we get the best opportunity to be successful on a very important project for the future of Aralia, that is the bridge over the Narrows. But the bridge alone over the Narrows is a pretty simple thing. What we're talking about here is a major historical and cultural monument to the history of the First Nations and of the Narrows in Ontario's, as Pat says, 5,000-year history. My belief is that there is a sensitivity in this country at the moment about supporting our indigenous peoples. I do believe that that is the part of this project that may put it over the edge in its being a successful project. And I think that will only happen if the indigenous people themselves are taking the lead on this, certainly with our support, both in the background and our support financially. So I think that's the way to get its best, the best chance of getting this project moving. And all we're saying, if they're not willing to do that at this point, for whatever reason, then I believe that we cloud up our opportunity to be successful on the other two projects that we have listed here. So I'm still in favor of the amendment. And I'm not quite sure how our offering to fully support our indigenous neighbors on this and encourage them to go forward and do that could be seen as offensive, but maybe I don't have the sensitivity that I should have with respect to that. But I look forward to having, our having those conversations with them and evolving an application together.
Mayor Clark?
Thank you, Counselor Clustra. I just want to reiterate, I never indicated there was a sure thing anywhere. I did indicate that I had received an indication that this is somewhat of a priority for Rama. It may very well have ended up on their agenda today if it weren't for a death in their community today, and I fully expect that it'll end up on their agenda in the near future. I believe that this project has the greatest amount of success if Rama takes the lead. It has the potential of saving, based on the scope of the dollar value for the project we received in our report last week, $12 to $15 million, has the potential to save the project $2.5 to $3 million if Rama takes the lead and are successful. And that would bring significant savings to the city of Aralia. I also would like to reiterate that this, as Counselor Eamon said, isn't an either-or situation, even without the discussion of the standalone arena. This would be the direction that I would support and would only support. And I have a comment when we get to the next amendment, but I'll save it for that. Thank you.
Any more discussion on the amendment? Counselor Sapola, and then I'll call the question.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with Counselor Eamon and the mayor as well. I totally support what Rama is trying to do here is with the bridge and the interpretive center as well. So I will be supporting the motion that Counselor Eamon and the mayor have put forward.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion? Carrie. Now I'll read, Mayor Clark will come back to the chair.
So I'm back to the original motion, clause nine, with respect, as amended, with respect to the Athlone Narrows Trail connection. Is there any further discussion on this application or further amendment? Counselor Sapola?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm wondering if there's an appetite to add another motion to this, that if Rama does take the lead, that we add the arena to this, only if they take the lead. If they don't take the lead, then, as Counselor Lauer says, maybe we just leave it the way it is. My other alternative would be to postpone this for two weeks or a week until Rama has an opportunity to discuss it. And I wonder how you feel about that, Counselor Eamon, or the mayor, or anybody around the table, if we table it for one week or two weeks until you've had an opportunity to chat with Rama.
My first blush response is that we are bound by time constraints. We do not have a meeting next week. We have council committee the following week, which is, no, we don't even on the 21st, it's 28th is our first council committee. But this wouldn't come back until council in November, and the application process closes right around the same time, so I think that's virtually impossible.
If I may, could you not call a special meeting, Mr. Mayor?
I guess, I mean, it's the will of the chair with the support of council, that a special meeting be called at any time. I'm not sure if I see it, the necessity for that at the moment, but I could certainly entertain that idea. Counselor Eamon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm well aware of my colleagues' desire to see us move forward with Phase Two in some form. I fully understand that. But the real debate we have here is not whether we want to move forward with that or not, it's should we put that in rather than Orser? Because I think we, personally, I think we would look somewhat foolish with the putting two arena projects forward, because what we're really just saying is, to the government, you pick the one you like. Because our data does not show demand for fourth ice surface in this community. And I do believe that the government would look at the two, seeing the magnitude of the dollars, and saying if the community wants, is comfortable with a renovation and upgrading of this arena, the dollars are significantly less for us to be involved and for them to be involved, and we can use these money, because there's demand all across the country for it, that if we were to be successful, they would opt for the smaller dollar. So let's be clear here, let's make the decision, do we or do we not? I want to replace Orser on this particular proposal with some form of Phase Two. My personal view is that that raises our risk factor significantly, because we don't have anywhere close to the evidence that is needed to be submitted. Counselor Sapola certainly circulated to me last week an example of a facility in a community north of here, but the detail of that document, it's 65 pages or so, was significantly greater than anything we have available. And so I'm skeptical about that, but I think that's the debate we should be really having, not whether we want to add another one, because I think that's just passing on what we, as a council, should be making a decision about to our federal and provincial colleagues.
I appreciate that, Counselor Eamon. And I don't wish to wane into the fray, but I'll just reiterate what our CAO said earlier, that there doesn't appear to be an obvious diminishing of one application by the inclusion of another one, even if they're competing, but perhaps there may be, so I understand the logic behind your comment. Counselor Sapola?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to make it absolutely clear, I'm not looking for a fourth ice surface. What I'm looking for is to replace an old rundown arena that's 45 years old, and to repair that, first of all, it's not official NHL ice, okay? That's number one. And apparently, we can't make it NHL ice surface. We can't do that. So as some of my constituents have said to me, Ralph, it's a no-brainer. If I thought for one minute, then let's put the waterfront park as number one, and the second arena is number two. And that, because that would attract more people than the existing Brian Orser Arena, as we call it, because a lot of people don't want to go there because of the situation that it's in, or the condition that it's in, and it's cold and all that good stuff that goes with it. So it has nothing to do with me, as I told you this afternoon, Mr. Mayor, nothing to do with my ego or whatever it is. What I'm trying to do is create recreational facilities for the future of this community, which is to help our children, our grandchildren, and as you said to me and I said to you, that if it wasn't for sports and the sports affiliation that I had and played and everything else, I'm not sure where some of these kids are. Some of the kids that are walking the streets, if they're, I don't call them kids, but young adults, if they had been involved in sports and team sports and everything else, would they be in the same position that they are now? I'd like to believe not, because I was one of them, that my high school coach took me under his wing and taught me how to play football and everything else, and I stayed as a team player. It's one of the reasons I ran for council in 1978, to get a recreation facility to help our children. And it's not being passionate about anything, it's being very, very serious and very conscious of what our youth want in this community. They want to be part, and they want to be asked, and they want a facility that's new, and it's doable, and it's modern. Brian Orser is not modern, and it can never be made modern, the way the walls are and everything else and that. And we could use that park, 2.5 acres of it, for a different purpose that will help the people that are in need of affordable housing, because we don't have any more property, 2.5 acres to build affordable housing. And we're not building it, we would ask, put it out as a development. So I'm just asking my fellow counselors, so let's move the waterfront park up and put the Brian Orser or the second arena in second place.
Thank you, Counselor Sapola. I'll take umbrage with one thing you said. You suggested that you weren't speaking with passion. I think maybe the opposite was the case. Counselor Sapola, do you have a second or for that amendment?
Not even sure what we're moving or seconding anymore, Mr. Mayor.
You did suggest moving the waterfront park up and putting one of the two projects at number two, but if you want, I'm not sure.
If anybody's interested in that, or the other alternative is to delay this until Rama makes a decision.
I think, as I mentioned, the unfortunate, the time constraints are indeed just that, and I don't believe that would be a very easy process whatsoever. Counselor Clustra?
Thank you to you, Mayor Clark. I'm going to talk a little bit about Brian Orser here for a minute. We're throwing a lot of widgets in the air for the examples, you know. I'm going to give an example of Guthrie Arena was basically the same age of Brian Orser. They spent $3 million of taxpayers' money, they didn't get any grants or anything for that, and they brought that arena up to basically current standards. It's a great facility. The hockey program in Guthrie and Oro is a huge program. The bones of Brian Orser Arena are very good. We spent money repairing the floor, repairing the plumbing, we repaired the new ice plant, we put all the refrigeration money into that building. To tear it down and replace it with another arena, which we don't have a location for, whether it be a third arena at Rotary Place or adding Phase Two to 255 West Street, we don't have those answers. We haven't gone down that road, we haven't budgeted for it, it's not in our 10-year plan. It's fine to build this stuff, but we don't have a way to pay for it. Currently, Brian Orser, if you want to take that out of the community area, where are those children, parents, kids going to go skating on Saturday nights? Where are they going to go get their french fries? Are they going to go do their public skating? Yes, we do need affordable housing in Aralia. That is something that is a long-term goal, which we can certainly support, which we already do support in the community. But replacing Brian Orser with a new arena and a new location, which is undetermined, taking it off the table is not a good idea. It has good bones, let's fix it. We've done two out of three, let's bring it home and do three out of three, and just finish the project. We've got the opportunity to get the grant money, so let's go through with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Clustra, for speaking with almost as much passion as Counselor Sapola did. Any further questions or comments or suggested amendments to the main motion?
Mr. Mayor, if I can get a second, or is that we include the arena? And to Counselor Clustra's thing, Phase Two was proposed for West Street Site as part of the new recreation center, providing that there was funding from the provinces and the federal government. At that time, we didn't have the money to do it, but it was included as one of the options as well. And if we go back a few years, the MRF had two arenas, the gym, the pool, and everything else, and it was a lot cheaper than what we ended up doing. So it was always intended to have an arena there, so it would be central to Aralians to use. They can take the bus to it, they can walk to it, and everything else. And if we build a third arena, if Brian Orser isn't going to be used over at Rotary Place, it is a criminal offense to the city of Aralia, to the citizens of this community.
I'm not sure if that would fit the definition of the term you just used, but your points will help me. Thank you. Okay, so I'm not hearing, seeing any other hands in the air for discussion, I'm not seeing any amendments brought forward.
Just, I'd like to move, if I can get a second, that the arena only be added to Phase Two of 255 West Street, as proposed earlier.
If I paraphrase from the chair, and correct me if I'm wrong, you're suggesting that the city put an additional application in for a standalone arena, which is suggested as part of Phase Two for West Street. Do you have a second? In that case, I will reread the original motion, moved by Counselor Ainsworth, seconded by Counselor Campbell, that clause nine...
Can't.
Madam CAO, I just want to clarify, under the rules, that Counselor did make a move a motion, is no longer here, but the fact that he was here and part of the meeting when he made the motion, that still stands?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, would you clarify your question?
So Counselor Ainsworth was the one that moved that clause nine be adopted tonight, and Counselor Campbell seconded, but Counselor Ainsworth is no longer here at the moment.
Oh, through you, Mr. Mayor, that was discussed and debated and voted on earlier in the meeting and still stands, so you're fine to deal with this motion as it is before you. The fact that council voted on pulling this motion earlier in the meeting and supported pulling this motion, that stands, and that is why you're dealing with this motion. So it is not a problem that Counselor Ainsworth is not here.
Okay. Well, so this, so the motion as amended is, so it was moved by Counselor Ainsworth, seconded by Counselor Campbell, this is clause nine, correct, Madam Deputy Clerk? And now I will read it as amended, and then ask for further discussion, and if there's any, the fact that Counselor Ainsworth is not here, even though he moved the motion, now as amended, we could still go ahead with the vote. Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, if I may, just as a point of interest, this is a peculiar situation. And the situation, as you've indicated, is councillor Ainsworth did move the motion and it was seconded by councillor Campbell. And so that, in effect, puts the motion on the floor. And so what the record will reflect, or what the minutes will reflect, is when councillor Ainsworth left, because we do record when council members leave, come and go. So that will be reflected, so it will be clear in the minutes that he won't be participating or he did not participate in the actual vote. But he did move the motion, put it on the floor for discussion and debate.
Indeed, thank you very much. I'm satisfied with that explanation in the chair. So moved by councillor Ainsworth, seconded by councillor Campbell, that clause nine, as amended, report number 201911 of council committee, now before council be adopted. Is there any further discussion?
I'd like a recorded vote, Mr. Mayor.
Recorded vote, indeed. Staff, if you would please set us up for a recorded vote, and I don't see any other desire to speak to this. To move the, essentially to move the applications as amended forward. As amended, yes. Is anybody unclear on what we're voting on? Please, councillor Lauer.
I'd just like to speak to this. I have absolutely no choice but to vote for this. Which is, you know, I just do not like the idea of gambling like this. And I think this is a wonderful project for the city of Arealia. And anyway, I got to support it, so, but I really regret that amendment.
All right. Thank you very much, councillor Lauer. Sorry, Jay, is that, just throw it, there you go.
Apologize. Through the chair, just a quick statement, yeah, I echo councillor Lauer's sentiment as well. Thanks.
Thank you very much, councillor Follis. Any further discussion? I will now call the question with a recorded vote, and you may now begin to vote.
Mr. Mayor, I will end the vote now and the results. Councillor Campbell, yes. Councillor Follis, yes. Councillor Hean, yes. Councillor Spohle, no. Councillor Kuester, yes. Mayor Clarke, yes. Councillor Eamon, yes. Councillor Lauer, yes. The motion is carried.
Councillor Spohle, a question on process, or?
Yeah, just very briefly, so if Rama takes the lead, we'll only put two applications in, is that correct?
Madam CEO?
Through.
Madam CEO?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, just to be clear, we will be submitting the application based on the motion that you've just read, with the number one priority being the Brian Orser renovations, and the second being the waterfront park. The third will only go forward if, in fact, Rama takes the lead on the application process. If they do take the lead on the application process, we will still be a co-signatory as part of that application. If they do not take the lead, then that project does not go forward for the, this particular grant opportunity.
Agreed, indeed, and if it does go forward, that would be deemed our third application, correct? Would be part of that third application. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
One report with all those clauses correct, so now we are, I'm going to entertain a, in the motions, councillor Eamon?
Thank you, Mayor Clarke. First.
Notice the motion, yes.
Hmm? Notice the motion. Do we have to vote on anything other than the motion? Okay. First, let me say, I apologize to my colleagues for this not having been brought forward at an earlier date. However, you may recall from my previous report on the efforts of Arealian area to form an Ontario Health Team, that we are under, the process is under significant time constraints. And we were successful, a bit to our surprise, that when the first application went in last May, the province received 150 applications. That was a surprise to them. They took significantly longer to review those, and we heard later in the year, summer, that Arealia had been selected as one of the 31 applications that was to move forward to be an Ontario Health Team and could move to step two. Forty-some applications were at the next level, they were pending and that they would be considered at the next round, and the remainder were, the indication was that they should continue to work towards this effort, and others would be emerging across the province. Our team has been working diligently to pull together the second application, which has to be submitted on Wednesday of this week. So the timeframe for this is, that's why the timeframe is tight on this. It is my intention with this to once again have our council acknowledge and confirm our support as a municipality for the effort that's moving forward. We understand that that was an important confirmation and support in our moving forward the first time, so we want to continue to be seen as involved in this, not only through the actions of my being on the committee and the mayor working on that as well through the hospital, but by this council taking a stand. We considered, we were hoping that we might be able to endorse the output of a workshop that was held a week or so ago. Unfortunately, that data has not been processed in a timely manner for us to be able to deal with that. So this motion parallels to some degree the motion that the county of Simcoe passed and are urging at their committees a week ago, and will be confirming tomorrow morning at their council committee, we hope. So that's going forward. But I wanted to go a little further, and let me just explain that what's happening. In the first year, if we are successful at Phase Two, the province has asked that we define a definable population, and by definable, they mean a population that is smaller than the 80,000 people within our catchment area, and smaller than just, say, dealing with seniors, but dealing with something where the exercise of all of the agencies who influence the health and wellbeing and care of persons in that group can actually have a chance of demonstrating that the new way of operating is successful. The difficulty for the city is that we're selecting a group that is frail seniors, those are folks who are not yet in hospital, are not yet needing full-time care, but are on the verge of that. I happen to be one of those, at least I've offered myself as a benchmark. But the point being that we're hoping that we can defray, defer further decline in the health of these individuals and prevent others from coming into that group over the time. The fact is that 99% of the energy and effort will be, to do that, will be delivered by those who are involved in dealing with those who are unwell. The city doesn't particularly deal with those that are unwell. But we have a very major role to play in the health, general health of our community and in the long term. As this evolves over the next five years and we're successful, we will play ever bigger and bigger role in addressing those determinants of health that are not dealing with those that are ill, but are dealing with housing, poverty, recreation, culture, food security, all of the things that a municipality deals with. And so I was looking for something that we could do in the short term that might have an impact on what's going forward. And one way we might have an impact is through both our transit system, because one of the issues that those that are less well have is their access to care. And we certainly have a great health system that does that, we have a transit system. The effect would be that if we invited the health authority to participate in our deliberations at transit, we would be able to bring the strategies and tactics of that cooperation, that partnership that's going on to address this group of people, to the transit table, and we might find that there are policy changes or program changes or systems changes that we could introduce or that we could negotiate with our partners in the surrounding townships that would enhance the ability to complement what's going on. The second thing is that we need to think into the future, starting now, about our active transportation people, and they have been doing, under councillor Campbell's leadership for the last several years, doing a commendable job of bringing to our community alternatives to cars and things, but making it easier for us to walk, making it easier for us to cycle and things of that nature. Well, I think we can do more of that. And again, so this is an opportunity for us to invite the health authority to participate as a member of that committee, and again, bring their thinking, the thinking that is required to deal with those that are unwell at the moment, and how we can enhance our trail system, how we can enhance our infrastructure to address that. So my intention here is first to substantiate our support, secondly is to extend that invitation. And that's the motion that was circulated to you. It was pointed out to me this morning, because we were rushing around doing this on Friday, that I had left out of the motion the request of staff to actually do something to allow the people to join our committees, and that is the statement and that staff be directed to prepare bylaws to amend the composition of the Transit Advisory Committee and Active Transportation Committee, as set out in chapters 115 and 118 of the City of Arealia Municipal Code respectively, to add one representative from each, sorry, one representative member from the Koochiching Ontario Health Team to each committee, and that a copy of this resolution be forwarded to the Chippewas of Rama First Nation and the Townships of Ramara, Severn and Oro Madonte. A couple of questions from the chair. Number one is, we have councillor Hean, who's on a senior, seniors committee, age-friendly committee, but that's not a city committee, so I guess it wouldn't be enshrined by this particular resolution. So I think I've answered my own question. Secondly, councillor Eamon, if I understood correctly, they were also looking, this is forwarded to the OHT for, what would we submit to them to put into their application due October 9th? If I may, Mayor Clarke, through you to the clerk staff, it would be my hope that if this passes tonight, that early tomorrow, you could forward this resolution in whatever formal form you do to Chris Archer and Ryan, my apologies, I have the name, I'll give them to you, just because they are the ones who are managing this. But the sooner they get it, the better they're going to be able to accommodate.
So what will it be, a letter that contains this motion, or simply be this motion indicating support? We did start drafting a letter a few days ago anticipating the possibility.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, during the council follow-up process, I will send a letter and enclose this resolution.
Okay, that's sufficient, great. I believe I have councillor Hean in queue.
Thank you, Mayor Clarke. This, I see, is terribly important. I don't think that, sitting around this table, we necessarily understand how important the transit and transportation policies are to our vulnerable senior population. I had a heartbreaking call a week or so ago from a vulnerable senior who takes the bus to Toronto every couple of months for a doctor's appointment, and Northland has canceled a number of their buses to Toronto. And so she phoned me and she said, how do I get there? The bus leaves at 5:00 a.m., and then there's not one until evening. And so I said, well, there's the bus that goes from Toronto to Barry. And then I realized she'd have to catch a bus out to Georgian College, and then from Georgian College to the outskirts of Barry, then from Barry to the ghost station, and then from there to Toronto. She's 85 years old, and that's beyond her. She's a vulnerable senior, how do we get her to Toronto to her doctor's appointment? By the time I finished explaining to her this to her, I was almost in tears, because it's beyond her and she doesn't know how she's going to get to her doctor's appointments in Toronto. And so we need to find ways to help our seniors surmount some of these problems. So I'm very much supportive of this. And my second question is through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Eamon, does it make your motion stronger if we have a recorded vote?
Sorry, could you repeat the question? Does it make your motion?
Does it make the motion stronger for councillor Eamon if we have a recorded vote on it?
I see. That's, it's always an option, I'm guessing, or I'm hoping there's strong support around the table for this, but.
If I may, Mayor Clarke, when we have a recorded vote, that's tabulated on the bottom of the motion, is it not?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, councillor Eamon, that is noted in the minutes. Typically, I don't include the recorded vote results in correspondence organizations.
For the record, the mayor does record the plurality on the resolution.
It may be that if we have a recorded vote and it's unanimous amongst those who are here, that your letter could indicate it was passed unanimously, so.
I think we could discern that even without a recorded vote.
Yeah.
The chair is a quick counter.
If I might just comment on Pat's point, is that's exactly the kind of dilemma that is currently faced by patients in our healthcare system. There are a number of agencies that do transportation, but they do it within a very narrow silo.
forwarded to the OHT for, what would we submit to them to put into their application due October 9?
If I may, Mayor Clark, through you to the clerk staff, it would be my hope that if this passes tonight, that early tomorrow, you could forward this resolution in whatever formal form you do to Chris Archer and Ryan... My apologies. I have the name. I'll give them to you, just because they're the ones who are managing this. But the sooner they get it, the better they're going to be able to accommodate.
So what will it be, a letter that contains this motion, or simply be this motion indicating support? We did start drafting a letter a few days ago, anticipating the possibility.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, during the council follow-up process, I will send a letter and enclose this resolution.
Okay. If that's sufficient, great. I believe I have councillor Heen in queue.
Thank you, Mayor Clark. This, I see, is terribly important. I don't think that, sitting around this table, we necessarily understand how important the transit and transportation policies are to our vulnerable senior population. I had a heartbreaking call a week or so ago from a vulnerable senior who takes the bus to Toronto every couple of months for a doctor's appointment, and Northland has cancelled a number of their buses to Toronto. And so she phoned me, and she said, "How do I get there? The bus leaves at 5:00 a.m., and then there's not one until evening." And so I said, "Well, there's the bus that goes from Toronto to Barry." And then I realized, she'd have to catch a bus out to Georgian College, and then from Georgian College to the outskirts of Barry, then from Barry to the ghost station, and then from there to Toronto. She's 85 years old, and that's beyond her. She's a vulnerable senior. How do we get her to Toronto to her doctor's appointment? By the time I finished explaining to her this to her, I was almost in tears, because it's beyond her, and she doesn't know how she's going to get to her doctor's appointments in Toronto. And so we need to find ways to help our seniors surmount some of these problems. So I'm very much in support of this. And my second question is through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Emond. Does it make your motion stronger if we have a recorded vote?
Sorry, could you repeat the question? Does it make your motion stronger?
Does it make the motion stronger for councillor Emond if we have a recorded vote on it?
I see. That's always an option. I'm guessing, or I'm hoping, there's strong support around the table for this, but...
If I may, Mayor Clark, when we have a recorded vote, that's tabulated on the bottom of the motion, is it not?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, councillor Emond. That is noted in the minutes. Typically, I don't include the recorded vote results in correspondence organizations.
For the record, the mayor does record the plurality on the resolution.
It may be that if we have a recorded vote, and it's unanimous amongst those who are here, that your letter could indicate it was passed unanimously, so...
I think we could discern that even without a recorded vote.
Yeah.
The chair is a quick counter.
If I might just comment on Pat's point, is that's exactly the kind of dilemma that is currently faced by patients in our healthcare system. There are a number of agencies that do transportation, but they do it within a very narrow silo. And this process is to bring those agencies to the table and indicate that across the multitude of activities that healthcare providers are in, how can we adapt and adjust our resources so that that individual is not left standing there? I don't think there's any belief that our bus system is going to drive to Toronto, and I know that's not what you're suggesting. But the point is that if we're one of those players, then we have to be willing to let healthcare issues and health issues speak to how we set policy and how we set process within our city. And that's the start of what we're doing here. I expect that this is just the first step, that over the next five years, we will see many of the things that our city is involved in on a day-to-day basis being tempered to some degree by this particular requirement within our community. And we started that process when we ran the Canadian Index of Wellbeing, because we believed it was useful to measure that. This is just saying, now we have to begin to take some actions along the way. But thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any other hands in the air. To address your point, councillor Heen, I've heard it suggested a number of times already, even though Link's essentially started very recently, the link, the county transit, bus transit system that's linking our municipalities. They have indicated they're only coming to the extremities of the city, because they don't want to intrude on our transit system. It'd be my hope, maybe through this process, that they do indeed intrude further into our system to make it more convenient. And the opportunity to do that may be when we have a proper hub, if not before. I will say, I've been on the hospital board now for five years, and I, it was a, I understand that it's an acute care facility and provides clinical and ambulatory care as well, but as somebody who sees things beyond those areas of responsibility, I really truly see healthcare as overall healthcare, preventative healthcare. How do we keep people from walking in the front door of a hospital? Forty-eight cents on the dollar right now, the provincial budget is being spent on healthcare. It's unsustainable. There's mounting pressures on hospitals, especially medium-sized hospitals, to balance their books on an annual basis. And so therefore, I think there needs to be creative solutions to doing that. I will commend this government for coming up with this structuring of a template that is evolving, because it's the first significant indication I've seen where there could be systematic change that more positively affects the overall health of communities, and therefore takes some pressure off our acute care systems. The, as councillor Emond indicated a few moments ago, and I think is enshrined in this resolution, the municipality actually affects a significant amount of healthcare in our citizens, 50% of the social determinants of health, in fact. So even though that won't necessarily be the full case in your, well, it will be coincident with the focus of the year-one program, I'm quite excited by this. The symposium we attended a week ago, a week and a half ago, really was a room at Geneva Park, full of enthusiasm of people who have been in the healthcare delivery business for one decade, two decades, three decades, and beyond. It was a lot of energy. I think there's a lot of positivity seen around this initiative. And also, as I think is indicated before, one of the reasons that we believe this OHT, Ontario Health Team project was allowed to go to the next stage was because of the municipality's involvement, and which will be seen as continued involvement. So I am in fully in support of this, and I hope our colleagues around the table see the benefit of this as well, and give a strong show of support so that we can move this to the next stage. Thank you. Any further discussion at all on the motion? I will now call the question. If you could hold your hands in the air for a moment, that'd be great. All in favor? Carry it, and I'll even do that. So I think we are safe in saying it's unanimous. What's that, members present? I have a motion on the floor for a five-minute recess. Is there a second? Moved by councillor Sepola, second by councillor Heen. We will keep it to five minutes, if that's okay? Sorry, all in favor? Sorry. Thank you. Okay, I believe we are in the deputation motions. My understanding is a second deputation, and it really wasn't an actionable item for us to put into a resolution, although I think there might be a little follow-up that we can do. But there was a request from Ms. McCourt and Ms. Rodenberg to have the City of Aria and the mayor join the Mayors for Peace Organization. And it is on the screen before us. Is there a mover and a second for that? Moved by councillor Heen, second by councillor Sepola. That's further to the deputation of Ann McCourt. The mayor be authorized to enroll the City of Aria in the Mayors for Peace Organization. Thanks for the education. All right. Is there any further discussion on that amendment, or sorry, on that proposed resolution? I will call the question. All in favor? Carry it, thank you. Councillor Emond, on that motion? On the other deputation? Okay, there was no motion, but sure, go right ahead.
If I may, they did indicate that they hoped that our zoning bylaw would accommodate the facility that they are attempting to put in place in a certain zone. And I'm just wondering, how do we go about confirming that, other than by their making an application?
What I, if it's, if I might suggest from the chair, Madam CAO, that I think my office is going to maybe reach out to economic development, and have them reach out to the library and makers market, and maybe even, you know, give them an inventory of space that they're looking for, something maybe relevant to what they're looking for, and also maybe just get a further discerning of the zoning and their desired locations. Because I know there was a similar request for the downtown within the last year to do some manufacturing and some retail, and that, yeah, that was against zoning, and I think for a good reason. But I think as soon as you get out in the shoulder of the core of the city, there may be some opportunities. So if it's sufficient, I will have my office reach out to Act Dev and maybe to those folks as well. Councillor Emond?
Mayor Clark, I'm more than comfortable with that, and I would hope that maybe those discussions result in a notice of motion, or a motion that comes forward, not only moving in direction, but showing our full, total support for something of this nature.
Indeed, thank you. Okay, we're now in the consent agenda. And staff, are you aware of any items being polled for change of direction?
Mr. Mayor, at this time, I'm aware of consent item nine being polled. That is the request from the Kooching Golf and Country Club. Councillors Emond and Lauer have declared a conflict on this item. And further, I am aware of councillor Coustra and councillor Sepola wishing to speak to the item as well. And I'm also aware of councillor Heen wishing to speak to item seven, which is regarding the sculpture donation. And councillor Sepola is wishing to speak to item four.
Sorry, and who wished to speak to number nine? I understand there were two conflicts, Ted and...
Mr. Mayor, that is councillor Coustra and councillor Sepola for item nine. It's being polled.
Sorry, it's been nothing being polled for a change of direction that you're aware of?
Not at this time, just the correspondence, item nine, which is being polled for a conflict. There are councillors just wishing to speak to that item when it's placed on the floor.
Thank you. So if it's all right, we will deal with the rest of the items first, correct? And is there a mover and a second to put this on the floor? Moved by councillor Coustra, second by councillor Campbell. The council adopt the recommendations set on the consent agenda for the regular meeting a council held on October 7, 2019, with the exception of the recommendations with respect to correspondence, item nine, which shall be introduced separately. Councillor Sepola, you wish to speak to item number four, regarding the SPCA?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yep, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think one of the phrases here, it says, "What does the future of animal welfare look like?" And then it goes on for municipality. Now that the Humane Society is not going to lay charges or any of that kind of stuff, what is the effect to us, A, on a, as you may know, I have a dog, and I love animals, and the prevention of cruelty to animals and that, whose responsibility will it be? Will it be the municipality? Because it says here, "So what this means for the municipality and their law enforcement officer means that you have the capacity to have a significant impact on lives of animals. Ensuring that pets in your community are protected requires a unified effort at the heart of which are animal bylaws." Are we, what are we going to be responsible for, and are we going to be doing anything about it?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. As council is aware, we contract the services of the SPCA to provide our animal control. Aria is leading edge, I guess, just in terms of an animal care bylaw that we have, and we've had that in place for a number of years. And that is, and will continue to be enforced by the SPCA, because they actually provide enforcement services for us, for our dog licensing bylaw, as well as our animal care bylaw. Moving forward in terms of cruelty investigations, at this point, it will fall within, I believe, the OPP's jurisdiction to do any of that kind of work, because we don't have the sort of infrastructure in place for our bylaw enforcement folks to do so. But I do know that Mr. Crawford is keeping informed on what other municipalities are actually doing to deal with that situation, and certainly if there's something of significance, he will be coming forward to council with recommendations. with recommendations.
Thank you very much. Counselor Heen, you speak to Item Number 7 regarding the sculpture.
Yes, Number 7 is the donation that Jimmy McKee is proposing to make to Foundry Park of the sculptures. And I just wanted to acknowledge this because I think it's just an amazing donation that he is making. I was part of the Ad Hoc Committee for the, for the Art in Public Places Committee, and I know it's going forward to them for a report. But we are so fortunate in this community to have such outstanding artists and who believe in our community and who are willing to just support it. And I can't think of a better place for Jimmy McKee's work than at Foundry Park when he uses material from our foundries. And for these ones, he's using patterns from Dora All Over Long. And I can see it almost as a, as a mini sculpture garden beside the Recreation Center. So I just wanted to express our thanks for him suggesting this. And I know it's going to go further than this, but I just wanted to acknowledge it at this time.
Thank you, Counselor Heen. Counselor Sepola.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too agree with Counselor Heen. I'm just wondering, Mr. Mayor, if Mr. McKee can be asked to do a deputation on his work that he proposes to go into the Foundry Park at some given time during the year. He did send me some information in a letter that I was going to meet with you and make some recommendations as well and ask your advice on how to handle it. But I think it would be really appropriate for the citizens of Arilia to, to hear directly from him, what he intends to do in his art and how he sees it going forward and just put some of the pictures so that the rest of the community can see it.
Thank you, Counselor Iman.
Thank you. I'm a bit confused how this got on our agenda. I know the Art in Public Places Committee put out a call in our community for artists to submit pieces, conceptual pieces for the Recreation Center. And Jim, Jimmy was on that list. And a shortlist has been prepared that will, I assume, at some point be submitted to the city. But it's way more than just Jimmy. There are many other, a number of other artists in our community who are also well reputed and, and are doing things so. I'm not sure that it's appropriate to take one of those artists out of that process and, and signal it. I think if we're going to do something, at some point, we want to celebrate the collective efforts of that group in supporting what we're doing here in our, our community from our point of view. And, and we set up the process through the committee to advise us on that. My understanding from the last OMA board meeting is that that process is working very well and they've, they've adjudicated it. The panel has made, made some, is making recommendations to it, so.
My understanding is, and I'll look to Madam Cao to nod her head or shake her head, is that they may be related but two separate sort of initiatives. I believe one is the submissions for art within the facility. And I think this is an offer of a donation above and beyond that particular initiative, but, and I'm seeing an affirmative. Counsel Iman.
Would that not be a, an initiative that is, as it says here, referred to the Art in Public Places Committee for an opinion, like the, you know, the Lightfoot statue and others of that nature, which?
It very well may be, and I will look to our Clerk's Department to...
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The recommendation is to refer the item to council committee and request a report from the Art in Public Places Committee. So they will be reporting back to council on that donation.
The potential donation, thank you. Again, separate from the, from the call for artwork. Counselor Sepola.
I think the reason why this becomes important is that he's used the material both from Dora All Over Long and some material from, I think, some from Amtaco as well, that were manufactured either on the site or right beside it across the road. And that's what makes it unique. And, and I think he's the only artist that has used the materials, the actual materials from the foundries that were on those properties. So, and that's why I think if the presentation was made to council, not for any action or anything else, just to inform us of what he really, what some of the products are. I know he explains it in the letter or in, in some of the stuff, but I think it'd be really appropriate for us to listen to what his intentions are for the park itself. I think you're absolutely right. The inside artwork has been done as Counselor Iman has said.
The only thing I would say, Counselor Sepola, is that we do have a defined process in play right now and it may very well, well, it's going to come back to council, council committee. And so I, my recommendation from the chair is we let that process run the course. Counsel Iman.
Mr. Mayor, acknowledging that these are separate, but I will reference the inside art where the proposal call was that the art must celebrate our industrial past. So there are a number of artists, Jimmy being one of them, who have in fact done that in their art. Whether they have actually used artifacts from the foundry, I don't know because I haven't seen the pieces per se, but everybody had to reflect that. So my point is that it's, it's possible to do it and they are doing it, so.
I will say that I think it's a wonderful offer of a donation. I believe it was Counselor Lauer and I that visited Mr. McKee's studio a number of years ago now and saw the pieces that were, again, were all derived, all the sculptures were derived from patterns from, from Dora All Over Long. It's certainly a celebration of our, our foundry past. Any further discussion on that particular item? Seeing none, items, so that's it, we're done. We can, any further discussion on the main motion with, except, to accept the items except for number 9? I'll call the question. All in favor? Carrie, thank you. No excuse, counselors. Three-letter T and three-letter T. Is there a mover and a seconder to put the remaining item, number 9, on the floor with respect to? Moved by Ra, sorry, moved by Counselor Koostra and seconded by Counselor Sepola? With respect to the request from Koochin Golf and Country Club, thank you very much, Madam Deputy Clerk. Moved by Counselor Koostra, seconded by Counselor Sepola. That the recommendation with respect to Correspondence Item 9 on the consent agenda, if the regular meeting of council on October 7th, 2019, be adopted. Discussion. I believe I have Counselor Koostra and Counselor Sepola wishing to speak to this.
Yes, thank you through you, Mayor Clark. Just a question regarding this $12,000 ask, as I know firsthand that it costs a lot more to run a business than it used to. If the money budget is not, I guess the request isn't granted, will that deny access to Koochin Golf Course?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. That's possible, that they may decide that they no longer wish to have the city utilize that space. But I don't know that definitively because I'm not sure if those conversations have been had in terms of if we don't, if we do not participate in the funding, that they will no longer have the city use the site. So I would have to confirm with Mr. Merkley whether that in fact would be the case if the funding is not provided.
And just supplemental to that, will we be given any financials from the Koochin Golf Course moving forward at budget time?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We could ask for that information so that we had a better understanding of their financial situation if we felt that that was applicable to their request that is before you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Koostra. Counselor Sepola.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to find a way in terms of budget to support this. A lot of children use that Toboggan Hill, everything else. So I agree with Counselor Koostra that we need to do something to help them. So we'll wait until comes, the report comes back.
Thank you. And if I could, from the chair to our Cao, if indeed you have this information, just curious, during the usable snow months, who is responsible for maintenance and who is responsible for insurance?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I am not certain about the maintenance aspect. I would have to confirm with staff, but the insurance, I believe there's a provision that we provide a certain aspect of insurance for our use of the facility. But I will certainly get clarification from staff on that and provide that information or will ensure that that information is provided for the budget process.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion on this item? Counselor Heen.
I would suggest that it's just not Toboggan Hill that she is, but also the whole golf course. I remember as a teenager doing cross-country skiing throughout that whole area. And I know that I've seen people doing cross-country skiing as well. So we, as a, as a community, we really do use the whole golf course throughout the winter. And so I think that we probably need to find somewhere, some way to help with, with the payment towards the upkeep of the golf course.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Counselor Heen. Seeing no other hands in the air, I'll call the question. All in favor? Okay, we're into bylaws. Is there a mover and a seconder to put the bylaws on the floor? Moved by Counselor Campbell, seconded by Counselor Folis. I'll wait till the paper copies in front of me. Moved by Counselor Campbell, seconded by Counselor Folis, that the following bylaws be enacted. 201998, a bylaw to provide that Block 6 on Registered Plan 51M1096, North Lake Village Subdivision Phase 2 is not subject to part lot control under the Planning Act 1868334, Ontario Inc., Titan Homes, 203, 207, 211, 215, and 219, and 223, Lucy Lane. 201999, a bylaw to provide that Blocks 1, 3, and 4 on Registered Plan 51M1159, Churchley Subdivision Phase 2A are not subject to part lot control under the Planning Act, Landon Homes Churchley, Inc., 242, 244, 246, and 248, James Street East. 2019100, Amendment Number 116 to Traffic and Parking Regulation, Bylaw Number 200755, as amended, Number 4, Mulcahy Court, and Lot Number 6, Permit Parking. A bylaw to amend Chapter 251 of City of Arilia Municipal Code, Delegated Authority. 2019102, a bylaw to amend Chapter 12 of the City of Arilia Municipal Code, Council Committee Procedure. And 2019103, a bylaw to amend Chapter 22 of the City of Arilia Municipal Code, Council Procedure. Any discussion on those bylaws or clauses within those bylaws? Madam Cao? Okay. And just to be clear from the chair, with delegated authority or with council committee procedure, the reference number is sufficient for those bylaws? Okay, thank you. Five years in, I thought I'd ask the question. Any further discussion? All in favor? Thank you. I believe we're waiting for one more potential bylaw. I need a mover and a seconder. Confirm the proceedings, moved by Counselor Sepola, seconded by Counselor Campbell. That Bylaw Number 2019104, a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council at its meeting held on this very day, October 7th, 2019, be enacted. Any further discussion? All in favor? Thank you, Carrie. Any announcements? Counselor Sepola.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. October 26th is Take a Vet to Dinner. So if anybody knows of a vet that would like to join us for dinner that night, we honor them. Or if any member of council would like to come, please let me know and I'll reserve a ticket for you. The vets are free. There's no charge for veterans. And if anybody has a veteran or knows a veteran that would like to come, if they can contact myself or Rick from the Legion, that would be very much helpful.
Indeed, I will be bringing my brother-in-law, who was a veteran that night, and thanks for putting this event on. You and your colleagues, Counselor Sepola. Counselor Heen.
Yes, I would remember, remind people that this weekend, Thanksgiving weekend, on the Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and Monday, the advanced polls are open. So if you have students home from university, now's the time to get them out to vote. They have a choice. They can either vote here or where they are going to university. But we, I think it's so important that we try and get our young people voting and into the voting process. And then, of course, on the 21st is election day, and I don't think we have a council meeting before then. So just please, please exercise your democratic right and vote.
Thank you. My understanding, and I stand to be corrected, but I'm pretty sure that a student can vote in, in either place or both places. Anyway, I'll look, I'll look into that, but I'm, I remember, I believe I learned that in the past. Well, anyway, well, look, you may very well be right. So let's take that off the scratch sheet for the record until I can confirm that. Thank you. I would, if I could, also just remind or tell the public that if they're unaware of it, we've been going through a strategic plan process for the city and a course service and organizational review. So the strategic plan is, is, is an opportunity for the citizens to do more than allow us to tick off a box as members of council and staff. We truly want you to come out and get engaged in the process. We've had some great feedback. I even had some more today, informally. And, and on top of that, just a reminder that we're going through a course service review, which is a way for us to identify areas that we, we may be able to improve service or, or change our operations. So this is all going on coincidence this year. To, to help facilitate that, we have an open, sorry, a public open house tomorrow night at 6:00 PM in this very council chamber. Presentations start at 6 o'clock and followed by a question and answer period. And there's an online survey that you can do, available at arilia.ca/yourarilia. The survey closes on October 11th, and there's still hard copies available here or at the library if you aren't able to do it online. And there's also some wonderful visioning boards that we have that we were able to use a couple of weeks ago, thanks to the efforts of staff, when we had roughly 400 people show up for a, for a climate change protest. And anyway, the Arilia Vision Board, so you can pin your input onto one of the, your Arilia Vision Boards located at City Hall and at the library, again, up until October 11th. So please come on out, start by coming out tomorrow night at, just before 6:00, and, and have your say, or at least get online and do the survey. Thank you. Any further announcements? Counselor Campbell.
Just wanted to offer my congratulations, as I'm sure everyone does, to Counselor Ainsworth, who was married on Saturday night, and I wanted to thank him for taking time out of his honeymoon to attend part of the meeting this evening. I guess he was anxious to get back at it.
Thank you, Counselor Campbell. Well, one more announcement, if I might. If members of council would join me in wishing our Madam Deputy Clerk a happy birthday. Happy birthday, 29, yeah? Anyway, happy birthday. I do believe we may have somebody here to, to speak on the open public forum. And Jimmy, I apologize, by the time I got your message, it was close to council and, and didn't have the time to, to return your call. So I did, I am glad that you did show up. I understand your personality well enough and in your vocation... I understand your personality well enough and in your vocation that the closing of information in Arilia is a concern. So if you would please come to the microphone and just identify yourself and essentially in which municipality you live. Five minutes to address us.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and council, for this part of the agenda. It's been a privilege to be here most of the night. I want to say, in dealing with people over many decades, I'm super impressed by your respect for each other and the way you conduct yourselves. And I wish the Parliament of Canada would visit you and find out what's involved in being dignified and respectful in dealing with difficult issues. Thank you very much for this time. I was called by one of the other counselors, Mr. Mayor, so I have a bit more information from which to speak. I want to speak to you tonight about the Information Arilia, which lists over 20 community partners involved in its services. A previous, not present employee listed the following as major contributions that Information Arilia makes in our community. By the way, I'm Jim Seagram. I'm sorry. I'm Jim Seagram, the priest at St. Athanasius here in Arilia. I've lived in the community for over two years. My first council meeting, I think, to my shame. These are the contributions. Hundreds of clients every year use the Tax Form Preparation Service to file income tax, thus receiving much-needed support such as their baby bonus. The operation and updating of Arilia 211 service, including the very valuable yellow card with details on much-needed contact information on a great variety of government and other support agencies. Three, support for youth, finding community hours when they or the school cannot find those hours for them, community service. Number four, registration support for folk having difficulty signing up for government discounts and support programs. Number five, general advocacy for those marginalized and challenged in navigating tasks with financial, government, and even charitable agencies. Through a conversation with one of the Information Arilia board members, I understand that Information Arilia has not closed permanently. And if that's not true, then I'd love to see someone shake their head and say it's not true, even though you're not here to dialogue with the microphone. Given that that is true, that it hasn't closed permanently, that it is closed temporarily in order to reorganize and restructure finances, liability issues, and its mission and mandate focus, I hope that is everyone's understanding, that it's only closed temporarily so that it can restructure and reopen. I encourage council and the Information Arilia Board of Directors to keep in mind the heart of the mandate. I'm not questioning that it is not in your heart, but to keep in mind the heart of the mandate for Information Arilia and to protect that mandate to assist those most in need of support and advocacy in managing the challenging realities of life's tasks in this complex digital and multi-government-layered age. I further encourage those responsible for visioning the future structure of Information Arilia to consider public consultation on its future and on its challenges. And that they, you and the board, encourage the media to cover the unfolding of this vital service in our community. Thank you for your time and consideration. Such an important ministry in this community. Thank you.
Mr. Seagram, thank you very much. And you don't need to hear this from me, but you're in the right location. Thank you. And also thank you for your patience in waiting to speak. It appears to be it for our open public forum. I will entertain a motion to adjourn by Counselor Heen, seconded by Counselor Spohler. All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Have a wonderful night.